And for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, if you would silence your cellphones, please, and meeting documents are next to, they are next to Commissioner Kelly. If you need a listening device, Robert will be able to help you with that. We'll begin with routine action.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes, corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 3rd, 2013.
Turn over the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $314,706.85.
Pay the bills with the comment.
Say aye.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Commissioner Barth.
This week's bills include $2,000 for trash removal at this campus and a couple of the buildings. It's just part of our daily grind.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, those in favor approving the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four reports, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for August 2013 and the Minnehaha County Human Services report for August 2013 have both been filed in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
A motion.
I'll move routine action.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine action. Carrie, you have any comments? No? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item six is application for abatement. Diane.
She doesn't look a bit like Kyle.
Good morning.
To welcome.
Deputy Director of Evilation. I have an application for an abatement for record 34893 for disabled veterans exemption for $1,504.77.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll move approval.
Check.
Motion and a second to approve the abatement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Diane.
Item seven, under notices and reports, the authori, is to authorize the county auditor to publish a request or proposals for a Minnehaha County compensation study. Carrie Dever.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you know, we are interested in conducting a compensation study for the upcoming year. This is not meant to be the comprehensive study that we did a few years ago, or actually five to six years ago already. This is just going out and we're looking at our salary ranges to make sure that they're still competitive, and then also looking at options for the commission to consider as far as different pay methods, whether we want to look at more of an open range, pay for performance, getting some options and feedback in that area. So today, we're asking your approval to go ahead and publish that. The intent would be to deadline it on October 4th and hopefully have the study completed by February of 2014.
Anyone have any questions for Carrie? Carrie, I believe this is part of our negotiation conversation, correct?
That's correct. We did agree with both the unions to do this.
Very good. Thank you.
Chairman. Commissioner Barth. Will that be enough time to get competitive responses?
Yes, we already have a list of, I think it's close to 20 different companies that will contact and plus will publish it. I'm comfortable that we'll get responses in the three to four weeks.
I can see why you're comfortable with that. Thank you.
Motion to approve the request for the auditor, authorize the auditor to publish RFP for the compensation study.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the request for a proposal for a compensation study. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Good morning. Anyone who would like to make a public comment about anything that's not an agenda item today, we would be happy to hear from them. You just come to the microphone, you need to give us your name and address, please.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Brett Healy. I'm from Pukwana, South Dakota. I'm a consultant for Four Directions Inc. to the executive director, O.J. Siemens, address this body on August 27th. This is a follow-up to that conversation. I've passed out before the meeting a binder with some information in it. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through the documents one by one. This is to provide you further information, but from the top, we wish to ask the county commission at their next scheduled meeting to calendar a motion of disapproval, if you will, of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance in their actions to go after Ogalalla plaintiffs in the Brooks versus Gant voting rights matter. I believe Mr. Siemens had provided you some of the information relative to that on August 27th. Some of the questions that came up as a result of that meeting, as well as conversations with the city of Sioux Falls attorney, there were some, I guess, questions whether a public body could take action with the Assurance Alliance, of which obviously Minnehaha County, Sioux Falls, and about 400 other public entities in South Dakota are members of that alliance. With that in mind, we had Mike Wilson, an attorney from Rapid City, pose exactly that question. Can a public body, whether a matter is in front of the courts or not, to be clear, the Brooks versus Gant case has been dismissed. The action now is relative to the costs that the defendants seem inclined to go after. And so we had that document prepared. It's there for your review. And in short, there is no legal prohibition. In fact, the back and forth I had with the city of Sioux Falls attorney, I kept asking him, was there a legal prohibition? He kept referring it to being improper. As my conversations with Mr. Wilson, there simply is no legal prohibition for a public body speaking up on public policy, especially relative to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. The next document, and this is really a tale of two counties, if you will, and we'll get to the taxpayer role here in just a second, but this issue of satellite offices, in early 2012, a request was made in late 2011 and early 2012 of the Shannon County and Fall River County officials and of the Secretary of State to have a satellite office on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation within the boundaries of Shannon County. Their answer was, of course, to take it to court. Todd County, on the other hand, a similarly situated county, one of the Section 5 counties in South Dakota, a heavily Native American, it is the heart, and in fact, the whole county is within the exterior boundaries of the Rosebud Indian Reservation. It's about 83% Native American by census population and home of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe or the Secandu Oyadate. Todd County, when asked by Four Directions to have permanent satellite offices for the primary and general elections, merely said yes, and that resolution is in your packet there. They moved to do that and didn't cost anybody a dime or any moral capital in going after native plaintiffs. They just said yes. The next document, that section's just a editorial that was recently printed in the Vermillion Plain Talk by the editor down there, just for your review, and that's frankly a story we didn't try to plant, didn't try to spin, didn't even, wasn't aware that Mr. Elias was even interested in the topic, but we think he did a pretty good job of outlining the issues relative to Indian voter rights in South Dakota. Now, you may ask, what is the nexus for the Minnehaha County Commission, and the city of Sioux Falls for that matter, to voting rights in South Dakota? And it's a very simple one. You are taxpayers, or your taxpayers that you represent pay taxpayer money in premiums to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And there's been a lot of money spent on Indian voter rights. You turn to the second section of your booklet, there is a Microsoft Excel printout, and let me just quickly go through the assumptions. And this is just three cases involved in South Dakota, all of which the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance was the funding source for the defendant counties in the case of Martin, of course, which resides in Bennett County. The other nexus is, it's the same law firm, Gunderson Palmer out of Rapid City, that was the attorney in all three of these cases. Now, the assumption is that in any kind of a lawsuit, both sides end up spending about the same amount of money, motions, counter motions, if you will, depositions, counter depositions. It all tends to average out in the wash with court costs, expert witnesses, and the like. In just three cases, commissioners, the Cotier case, which is out of the city of Martin, and you've got background information from the court on what the plaintiff's fees were, and we made the assumption that if we could estimate or had actual plaintiff's fees, we'd know what the estimated defendant's fees were. In the Cotier case, which went up and down, it's a very complicated case, but at the end of the day, city Martin did change their redistricting for their three city commission districts, but the plaintiff's attorney's fees ran with costs well in excess of $650,000. Now, one makes the assumption that the defendants probably spent about the same. You go to the Black Moon case. This is out of Charles Mix County, again, a member of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. This one was settled before it was fully litigated. I will also tell you that Charles Mix County is under a pocket trigger, if you will, they're under preclearance with the Department of Justice. Even as the Supreme Court took the Section 4 formula out of play, and now there's no longer preclearance required, at least for right now with Shannon and Todd County, Charles Mix still has preclearance requirements because that was part of the settlement. In the Black Moon case, $110,000, and the reason we know that is that is what the court ordered the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance to write a check to the ACLU to settle that case. So that, again, $110,000, we make the assumption, again, that the other side spent about the same amount of money. And then lastly, the Brooks case, as we just talked about, tale of two counties, really no reason for that to ever have gone to court. The money was there to pay for it. As of May 2008, South, former Secretary of State Chris Nelson had made Shannon County aware and Todd County aware that the limited satellite voting they were going to have in 2008 was an eligible, reimbursable Help America Vote Act expense. So the federal money was there to pay for it. When 2012 election cycle comes around, requests were made from the two, were made to the two counties to have full-time satellite offices to make voting equal. Todd County says yes. Doesn't cost you a thing. Shannon County digs in, and based on conversations I had with the plaintiff's attorney in terms of just number of hours of 825, and that reflects pretty much on track with the overall number of hours in the Cotier case, which exceeded 2,600 hours for the plaintiffs. That 825 hours at a $225 attorney rate, which seems to be in the mix, that represents about $185,000 in attorney's fees, another $25,000 in expert cases. There's other costs on top of it, but for purposes of this illustration, that ends up being on top of $200,000. So one county doesn't cost the Assurance Alliance a thing. The other county, just to get to where Todd County was with a simple request, they ran up a cost of $210,000. I will bet you, because it doesn't take much of a mathematics genius, that Shannon County probably isn't going to come up with $225,000 of premiums to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. They are relying on the wealthier pieces of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, Watertown, et cetera, to make these, to make up these expenses. You take just these three cases, folks, there's almost $1.1 million in expenses that have probably been expended by the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. The reason we're bringing this information to you today is, who's standing up for the taxpayer, for your taxpayers, by suggesting, maybe we hadn't ought to go down this path? When we questioned the auditor in Shannon County, was there a motion made by the Shannon County or Fall River County Commission to go after these plaintiffs for these $6,000 in costs? Sue Ganji didn't know. When pressed, the attorney, attorney at Gunderson Palmer, said, "The county commissioners and the county defendants had nothing to do with it. It was the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance." When O.J. Siemens had conversations with Judy Payne, the executive director of the public alliance, she didn't know anything about this case until she read it in the Sioux Falls Argus Leader and saw the comments from Commissioner Pecos and Commissioner Barth. She didn't know a thing. So I ask you, who's making these decisions that, gosh, Todd County made the right decision? Didn't cost the taxpayer a dime when the same request was made. Shannon County, Fall River County, they dig in, and they cost over $200,000 minimum, and they get to the same point that Todd County did with a simple yes. So the question becomes, is it worth, you know, in a couple of weeks, at your next commission meeting, moving a motion to disapprove of the actions of the public alliance? Get some accountability in there. Somebody needs to put the brakes up. You've got a law firm that's collected a whole lot of money. Maybe it isn't quite 1.1 million, but it's probably pretty close to a million. It's a lot closer to a million than it is to $6,000. But who is making these decisions, these go decisions to say, yep, we ought to go after it? I turn you to the third part of your booklet. Here's what's coming up next. Now, as you may have, may have been able to read over the summer, we've been working with three other counties in South Dakota and tribes. The Ogalalla Sioux Tribe, now, of course, Shannon County's on the Ogalalla Sioux Tribe or Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, but so is Jackson County. Basically, the old Washabaugh County, which was one of the unorganized counties until it was merged with Jackson County, it's south of the White River, south of Kadoka, it's fully, the old Washabaugh County is on Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. So we've been working with Ogalalla to have a request for a satellite office in Wamba Lake. Similarly, on the Cheyenne River Indian Reservation and the Dewey County portion of the Cheyenne River, as you may know, the Cheyenne River Indian Reservation completely encompasses two counties, Dewey and Zebok. The tribal capital is in Eagle Butte, the county seat for Dewey County is in Timberlake. In 2012, voluntarily, Dewey County worked with the tribe and had a satellite office in Eagle Butte, in the tribal capital. But, you know, costs are tight, they're looking for whether HAVA can reimburse those funds. Similarly, Buffalo County, now, this is a lot closer to where I'm from. I will also let you know, Buffalo County, by census, is absolutely the poorest county in the United States. Per capita GT, gross domestic product of about $5,200. That is $1,000 less than Ogalalla. It is a tough place. It's 85% Native American, but the whole county is not on the reservation. If you know your South Dakota geography a bit, the Crow Creek Indian Reservation brackets the Missouri River. It has got far eastern and southern parts of Hughes County, the far southern parts of Hyde County, and then most of the reservation is the western half of Buffalo County. We worked in 2004 and paid money, private money, to have a part-time satellite office in Fort Thompson. We didn't, we didn't find private money in '06 and '08 and '10, so there were zero days of a satellite office in Fort Thompson. The other key fact you ought to know about Buffalo County is, you've got one community at Fort Thompson that's about 1,300 folks. The county seat, it's a stretch to call it a community. It is a ghost town for all intents and purposes. You better not run out of gas there because there is not even a place to get gas. It's got 14 people, according to the census, as you may have seen in the Argus Leader and elsewhere, with the oil boom going on in North Dakota, Slope County, North Dakota, just their county seat, boom to 20 or 22 folks, and Buffalo County now has the smallest county seat by population in the country. The reason I bring that up, it's 25 miles one way from Fort Thompson to the Gann Valley, 50-mile round tripper. 70% of the folks live in about a three-square-mile area over Fort Thompson. Almost all the population is there. There ought to be a place to vote there. Frankly, the courthouse probably ought to move there, but for purposes of equality of voting, again, having an equal opportunity at the ballot box, it ought to be there. So we've been pushing for a HAVA funding to pay for. As you may have seen, the South Dakota Board of Elections said, nope, and Secretary of State said, we're going to ask the Election Assistance Commission, a body that doesn't have any commissioners and never is going to answer, and he just as well wrote to Santa Claus, but the fact is, they said no. Four Directions, on behalf of the Ogalalla Sioux Tribe, Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, and Crow Creek Sioux Tribe, filed a civil rights complaint through the Voting Rights Section of the Department of Justice. We know from our contacts there, they are reviewing that complaint, and that letter is the first thing in that third section. Second thing in that third section is a resolution just passed last Friday in Bismarck, North Dakota, by the Great Plains Tribal Chairmen's Association. Great Plains Tribal Chairmen's Association is the tribal elected leaders from 16 sovereign Indian nations in North Dakota, South Dakota, and Nebraska. So it includes all nine tribes in South Dakota. And as you look at the resolution, you'll see it's signed by the secretary of the association, that's Brian Brewer, he's the president of the Ogalalla Sioux Tribe. It's also signed by the chairman of the Great Plains, Tex Hall, who chairs also the three affiliated tribes in western North Dakota. Reason I bring that up is they endorsed this same civil rights complaint and are asking Attorney General to look in to the denial by the South Dakota Board of Elections. Lastly, in that packet, just yesterday, the American Civil Liberties Union filed a letter, again, endorsing the complaint filed by Four Directions and the tribes earlier, to have the Attorney General look into what's going on in South Dakota when it comes to equality of voting. I would point to you the signatory on that civil rights, or the civil rights complaint or endorsement of it by ACLU. It's not just filed by the guy here in South Dakota, it's filed by Lachlan McDonald. He's been doing voting rights stuff for about 30 years, all over the nation, but all these Indian country voting rights lawsuits across South Dakota, Montana, I think even some in North Dakota, they, he's been a key player in all of that. Reason I bring that up to you, the Department of Justice is certainly looking at this. We think from the fact that in the wandering medicine case in Montana, that we helped engineer, that is before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, in which the Department of Justice has filed not only a district court-level amicus brief, but also a appeals-level amicus brief, and they are going to be arguing alongside the plaintiff's attorneys on October 10th in Portland, Oregon. They're probably going to be interested in this, this little old thing in South Dakota because it is exactly the same case as in Montana, counties that have courthouses, but that the equal opportunity is not available on reservation as off. Folks, we're not threatening legal litigation. We try to get things done the right way. What I'm telling you is, you've got a public insurance pool that is fighting these ideological battles far from Sioux Falls, and of course, Sioux Falls, it's a culturally diverse, ethnically diverse city. It's a tolerant city, and so is Minnehaha County. But your dollars are being spent to fight some real rough ideological voter suppression battles in other parts of South Dakota. Our point in bringing this to you today is, this isn't a $6,000 issue, that's a moral thing. The alliance shouldn't be going after those plaintiffs and forcing them to strip down financially in front of the court to prove that they are too impoverished to pay costs to defendants that shouldn't have cost you a dime and should have just done the right thing. That's a moral issue. You've got a taxpayer issue here of, your checkbook is helping fight these ideological battles, and it's a, it's a fool's errand. They've lost most of them. The only one they won was they did get the city of Martin case turned around, but I would venture to guess that had the city of Martin had to depend on their own taxpayers, they wouldn't have been risking 1.2, 1.3 million dollars had they had to pay the fees to the plaintiffs if they didn't have your checkbook backing them up. Their taxpayers simply wouldn't have afforded that opportunity. That is the only case, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, in South Dakota over the last three decades in which the plaintiffs did not win or get the thing settled on the plaintiffs' terms. These other things, it was a clever move by the defendants in the Brooks-Gant case to say, we'll give you three more cycles, and we'll have the HAVA money pay for it. It's not because they won a voting rights case, and there's other stuff coming down the pipeline. Your taxpayers are on the hook for it. I hope you take action in a couple of weeks, and with that, I'd answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Does anyone have any questions or responses? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has anything that's not on the agenda who would like to make a public comment about any other issues? No one's moving forward, so we'll go to item number 10.
Item 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for a special on-sale liquor license for all occasions by Hy-Vee for a wedding reception on October 19th, 2013, at the Crick's Gun Club, North Country Events Hall. And this is the second application that's come before you, and it has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, the state's attorney's office, and the planning department, and there were no objections reported. And Mary Ann Lux is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Are you getting tired of looking at us?
No, this is interesting.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Do you have anything you would like to add to the application?
No, pretty much that's it.
Any motions by the commission?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second? I'm assuming to approve the application?
Yes.
It is a public hearing, so you've got to come back.
No, no, public comment.
I'm kidding. Geez, you guys are all uptight this morning. Didn't you have anything better to do this morning, Ken? Okay. Anyone have any public comments that they would like to make about the application? Either pro or con? See? We aren't that tough to get along with. So now, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the application for the on-sale liquor license for all occasions. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now that that's over, could I ask a question of Cindy Johnson?
Sure.
How many days a year can a business have a one-day liquor license?
Well, according to the resolution that was passed by the commission about a year and a half ago, a single entity or person can have up to six a year.
So 365 is out.
Right. Right.
And that's set within your authority to do that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Jeff. Item number 11.
Item 11 is to recognize Pat Krupa, Minnehaha County Veterans Service Officer, as the South Dakota 2013 County Veterans Service Officer of the Year. Carol Muller.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Human Services. We are pleased to recognize Pat Krupa today. Pat is a long-term employee of Minnehaha County, and she started working in the Veterans Service Officer Department, and shortly after that became the Veterans Service Officer. She did receive the Jim Melgarde Award from the South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs a couple of weeks ago. The Melgarde Award distinguishes Pat as the 2013 County Veterans Service Officer of the Year. As the VSO from Minnehaha County, Pat was recognized for her outstanding commitment to veterans, dedication to filing fully developed claims, and the ability to earn the trust of the veterans. And Pat just shared yesterday that she did pass her test again this year. They just take it every single year. In 2010, Pat received the Excellence in Veteran Education Award. She has embraced, I know that they appreciate the Vetra, the Vetrespec program, and that was, I believe, 2011?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is when that program came on board. It was a new way of doing business that's out there. Pat serves over 1,000, about 1,000 vets a year, and as I mentioned, they really appreciate her complete eagerness of work and claim. So, Pat, we were pleased to have you receive this recognition.
Pat, do you have anything you'd like to say, or?
No. I was, I was surprised when I received the award, and I talked to Larry Pearson up here yesterday, and like Carol said, he said I aced the test.
Thank you very much.
I feel pretty good about that.
Yes.
You're an awesome asset to the county and to the veterans. I happen to know Jim Melgarde really well from a number of years ago, and he would be very proud of your qualifications and your efforts to help these veterans who always need more help. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign a right-of-way easement with Minnehaha Community Water Corps for a water service connection line on the east half, southeast quarter, except the railroad right-of-way, Section 6, Township 101 North, Range 50 West. Kristin Trana.
Good morning, Kristin Trana with the Sheriff's Office. I bring to you today a, an agreement to, to allow for an easement in order to have the water come to the house at the range. This is the house that we really use for training space and classroom space, and then also to have modern facilities out there, so. to have modern facilities out there, so.
Anyone have any questions, Kristin?
It's nice to have water, I'll make the motion.
It really is.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the right-of-way easement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item thirteen is to authorize the Chairman to sign an agreement with Prairie View Prevention Services for preventative education classroom instruction on drug and alcohol abuse at the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Todd Cheever.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Cheever from the JDC. This is an agreement to have classes once a week provided by Prairie View through the JDAI family, or Facility Inspection Team recommended that we add this. It is at no cost at this point through a grant from the South Dakota Office of Highway Safety Division funds, and Prairie View Prevention will manage that. If that goes away, it would only be sixty dollars for a week for those classes. So it's prevention education for drug and alcohol.
Thank you, Todd. Questions?
Todd, do you have any idea how long that grant might last?
It's an annual grant, I think it lasts until, I want to say, May. Then they just, Prairie View Prevention was very upfront, they said they don't know federal government whether it'll be back or not. It is, it'd be sixty dollars a week at that point for, you know, one, one hour of counseling classes, so it's a pretty good deal, too.
Thank you. Any other questions for Todd? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the grant request. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item fourteen is to authorize the Chairman to sign an application to the Office of Homeland Security for Citizens Corps Grant in the amount of $10,000. Lind Young, not Lind Young, Doug Blumker.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Blumker with Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Lynn is attending the State Emergency Managers Conference in Chamberlain this week, so I'll be speaking on his behalf. We are applying to the Office of Homeland Security in the state of South Dakota to authorize, or ask you to authorize a grant to further enhance our Citizens Corps and our Volunteers and Police Services programs through the county. We've used this grant for a number of years to train our volunteers and also to outfit them with uniforms, coats, et cetera, to be able to have them perform their duties as we require them and ask them to do. So, the grant we're requesting for is $10,000 this year.
Thank you, Doug. Does anyone have any questions for Doug? Commissioner Kelly? It's sounding dumb. Can you tell us again about the Citizens Corps?
Citizens Corps is a program through the Department of Homeland Security. It has a number of different branches that are involved with it, a medical corps, Neighborhood Watch, Volunteers and Police Services, Citizens Emergency Response Teams. Primarily in Minnehaha County, the two programs that we've worked most with are the Citizens Emergency Response Teams and the Volunteers and Police Services, which compromise and uses our police reserve unit that I administer through our office and also our rescue squad. We do have a small cert team active in the Brandon community as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application for a Homeland Security Grant. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Item fifteen is consider a motion to approve the purchase of rock salt at a unit cost of $59.87 per ton from Central Salt LLC from contract number thirteen dash zero one zero eight, competitively bid and awarded by the city of Sioux Falls. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioner DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Just requesting authorization to purchase rock salt off of the city of Sioux Falls bid. There are several bids that have been going around and awarded, not awarded, based off of the expected availability of salt this winter, and the city just awarded this a couple of weeks ago, and they're basically telling us that it's going to be the only salt that's available and the quantity that we need, and so we're not thinking that it would be advantageous to do our own bid. It would just be the best award based off of the city of Sioux Falls bid.
Any questions with DJ? Why is there such a shortage of salt?
I think that there's production limits. There's a very limited supply of rock quarries or salt quarries, and I think down in Kansas is where the most, the majority of it from this area comes from, and they produce what they want to produce to feed the supply and demand. I'm not going to say control the pricing, but essentially I think that's what they're doing. Maybe they don't want to make too much because then they have a larger stockpile and, and they can't afford to do that, but the quarries definitely control the availability of it. There's also another argument for transportation, the amount of trucks that are available for transportation for this usage. Not a lot of people out there that want to haul salt all the time because it ruins equipment, and so, once the trucking companies get booked up, the prices get more expensive, and the trucking companies get booked up very early on with the very large vendor, or the very large clients like the DOTs, and so the smaller quantities are generally a little bit more expensive.
Okay. Thank you. I think Commissioner Heiberg was first.
Do you know how this compares with last year's prices?
It's a couple dol, a few dollars more per ton, and that is what we've seen on all of the contracts, not just ours. The state of South Dakota has an open contract with this same vendor, and we requested authorization to purchase off of that contract, and they said no because of the trucking expense.
Commissioner Kelly? I noticed the contract says transportation to Sioux Falls Street Department. They will transport it to us, we don't have to go pick it up at the street department.
That's correct, yeah. Coming from Missouri, that their transportation costs are essentially the same coming to Sioux Falls.
Does it come from rail, or is it all truck?
It's all truck.
Any other questions? Excuse me. If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract for rock salt. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixteen is to consider a motion to declare various items from the Information Technology Department as surplus for disposal at the joint city-county surplus property auction. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you will recall, on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, you declared a number of items as surplus in preparation for the public auction on September twenty-first. In the meantime, the Information Technology, as part of their replacement cycle, identified a number of other pieces of equipment that they would like to get into the surplus auction sale after they went through their latest round of equipment replacements in the departments. And then you have that list attached to this memo, and includes a number of printers, some notebooks, some flat panel monitors, and some desktop computers, and all the appropriate serial numbers for those are also attached. So we would like a motion to declare these items as surplus for purposes of putting them on the public auction for September twenty-first.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have any questions? Is this another one we need unanimous?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion with a comment.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner?
Just want to remind all the Commissioners that although we're putting it up for bid, we are not allowed to bid on that.
Good point. Anyone else have any comments or questions? If not, they need a motion?
We have a motion.
We do?
We have a second.
Boy, I've got a short memory. We have a motion and a second to approve the surplus auction. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. That was only fifteen seconds, do we need to worry about this? Yeah, I would think.
Item number seventeen is to consider an amended resolution relating to refunding outstanding certificates of participation, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement, and approving and authorizing the execution of related documents. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, and last week we passed Resolution MC thirteen forty-eight, which authorized refunding the county bonds. Subsequent conversations with the Chair, Doherty and Associates, or Doherty Company, I should say, and Ken McFarland and myself revealed that it would probably benefit the county if we, if we changed the date on that from fourteen to thirteen. What we're going to do is, is sort of take the savings upfront and put it into the building fund, and that would allow us the most flexibility for what we might want to do in the future. Woody's here from Doherty Company to answer any questions about this you might have, and I'd also give a stab at it, too. Today, we're asking that you allow us to change the date on the resolution.
Do you have a new resolution, Mike?
Yes.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah, you need to come to the mic, Woody, even if we all know you and your voice.
Just real quick, there are three changes, really, on the Section 101, and just change the date to December, on or after December one, fourteenth, to on or after December thirteenth, and the same change in Section 1.03, and increase the dollar amount from twelve, not to exceed twelve million to twelve million five.
Okay. Thank you, Woody. Any other comments or questions for Woody or for Bob? I will tell you that when we discussed this last week, the reason that I think this is an attractive change is the fact that we can use it if we choose to use it in two thousand and thirteen, so to speak, for the two thousand and fourteen budget for the potential of building our one-third share of the archive. That would give us some additional revenue that we frankly would not have to budget for.
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I think it's also my duty to tell you that if we take this upfront, we're going to have slightly less savings than we would if we panned it out over the next seven years, but I think that this allows us the most flexibility for the scenarios that we might have. Now, as an auditor, I tend to like a level debt service for its predictability, but you know, that's, that's not necessarily a thing that we have to have either.
There's also the issue of present value of money, so that has a long-term effect on frankly us borrowing money or using it for an immediate expense or capital cost. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
There is. Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution relating to the refunding of outstanding certificates of participation.
Second.
Do you also want to include the changes that?
Yes.
I think once the doc will do resolution.
Okay.
It has a new number on it.
I thought you said there were changes to the new one. No.
No, those were the old checks.
Okay.
The difference in the two resolutions.
This would, the older one was Resolution thirteen forty-eight, this would be Resolution MC thirteen forty-nine.
Okay.
MC thirteen forty-nine is my motion.
Thank you, Todd. I have a motion and a second to approve the amended resolution.
Oh.
No?
New resolution.
The new resolution. You know, I should have stayed in bed this morning. The new resolution. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Woody.
Item eighteen is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to use the podium for a minute.
Sure. This has anything to do with your mayoral candidate on here? I have a button to turn off the microphones, and I'll use it.
That explains everything.
Yes. Is this on Dropbox?
Not yet. There's a document, Mr. Chairman, Jeff Barth, Minnehaha County Commissioner. I went to a meeting in Laverne on drainage, and I just want to give a brief report on it. Among the things that I learned was about a new control process that they're using in drainage in the fields where they can control the level of the groundwater. So in this, in this device here, they're able to put these blocks in, which then back the water up and allow the field to stay wetter. The idea is that you drain your field enough so that you can drive on it, but you drain, you don't drain it so much that it turns into dust, and they can even use that to backfill, so to speak, water and, and keep a field during a dry period, keep it wetter. And you can sort of see these little blocks in there, they can be removed depending on how far you want to drain things. Now, there's also, we had some farmers that actually were using this, and in this example in the photo there, they had two drain control facilities, one that backed the water up in Section A, and a second one that backed the water up in Section B. The one farmer that had put it in in his sixty acres or whatever, the far end of his field still got dry because it was only backing the water up for the area closest to the control thing. Now, we also had some discussion on bioreactors, which can remove the nitrate in the water, and in Minnesota, apparently, the NRCS along with the state is subsidizing farmers to install that, that type of facility, and it's based both on putting in the bioreactor and then the number of acres that are being treated. I don't know of any such program in South Dakota, but apparently there's federal money as well. And I will say that while I was at that conference, I found out from a SDSU professor that he was presenting yesterday here in Sioux Falls at the Mayor's Summit on drainage, and, you know, it's the kind of thing that if the mayor is concerned about the quality of water coming down through Skunk Creek or the Big Sioux River, that maybe the city would like to help farmers put in this type of biofilters or, or man-made wetlands to control that. Anyway, that's a little bit of a report on this, and I think that, I don't believe we have very many, if any, control devices in Minnehaha County. I think, I heard there were a couple. There are a couple of bioreactors that have been installed on a, more of an experimental basis. They, they work very well, and one's up in Baltic. I don't know, Cindy, if you were there at Hefty's Field Day, but we walked right on it, and they have the stats that show nitrates going in and nitrates coming out, and that's a dramatic reduction. Anyway, a very interesting thing, and I think that as much as we have to do with drainage, we should keep an eye on developments in the technologies and all that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for going. Did anyone from Planning and Zoning also attend?
They did not, but they did send a couple to yesterday's summit. Lincoln County was not invited either.
Okay.
We didn't get anybody.
We didn't get anybody.
Crashed.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? If not, any new business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will be going to the state convention representing us. Is there a sense from my fellow Commissioners on anything you'd like me to represent us on in that group?
I have to tell you that one of my concerns or questions is if there's going to be any dialogue amongst the counties about Senate Bill seventy, if they understand this whole process, and if they do or don't, I'd like at least to have that conversation, and maybe there needs to be more discussion about that at some point if they're not going to address it at the state convention. I think it needs to be addressed sometime in the near future.
I think he did it, wasn't he?
You know, we had made the recommendation that they have some sort of informational on Senate Bill seventy, you know, whether, whether it be some of the mechanics associated with the reimbursement process, et cetera. Commissioner Pecus was there when we made that request, that, and was suggesting that that would really be a good topic, and I was disappointed, I didn't see it anywhere.
I thought I read it on there, but maybe.
Did you read it?
I thought I did, but.
Because there's been a lot of amended agendas going back and forth, but depending on how that comes out at convention, I think, Commissioner Barth, you should make a very strong request that for the spring workshop, at, at the very least, you know, and those are typically held in March or so of each year, but that the spring workshop really needs to contain a very good program on Senate Bill seventy and the mechanics and what the expectations are of the counties, and particularly how the reimbursement process is supposed to work, et cetera.
Thank you, Ken. I have to say, I did read through it again last night, and I don't, did not see anything on there. Of course, I was watching the football game at the same time.
Well, I skipped it when I read it, too, so I just thought I saw it.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
I had a conversation last week. I had a conversation last week, yeah, I believe it was last week or the week before, with Jim Sword, who's the state's attorney out in Fall River County, who's a classmate of mine and a good friend. But anyway, he indicated that at least when he was at the State's Attorney Association meeting, that they had a lot of questions regarding SB 70, and they haven't really gotten any answers, how it's going to affect their counties. He asked his circuit judge that was down there, that's actually Craig Fifely is their circuit judge, and he asked if he could ask at the judicial conference to see if it came up, and that was not discussed at the judicial conference either, according to Craig Fifely. So, he said that they were sending their prisoners, at least from Fall River County, which is Hot Springs, up to Pennington County, and Pennington County informed them they're full, they can't accept anybody new. So, he said they're actually looking at a $3 million expansion in Fall River County of their jail, which they are trying to figure out how they're going to fund it. So, I said it's good to know that the west half of the state is wrestling with what we are wrestling with in Minnehaha County. So, as far as consistency is, it looks like a lot of counties are rubbing their nickels together to scratch out a penny to try to pay for this. So, hopefully in the future, we'll get a little bit more clarity to this. I know that the Sheriff's Office is going to have their study completed in the near future, and I know they'll be making their presentation, at least regarding the effects of not only, I believe, our future CCC plans, but also in relationship to what the expert predicts SB 70 could have on Minnehaha County. And, you know, quite frankly, that may be extrapolated to the rest of the state, I don't know.
Thank you for your comments. Any other new business, Commissioner?
I guess I would just like to ask if it's our sense that I should proceed with attempting to get tax on alcohol or other resolutions, and what about the situation in Bennett County? Do we need to take any, do I have any feedback to bring on that issue? You know, where they're completely strapped and surrounded by cost?
Anybody have any comments about those two?
Well, I think you just got to keep on the, these people don't understand it's going to happen to them, not just us, and that Bennett County's going to happen to them, not just Bennett County. Maybe not now, but you know, if tracking continues. And while I'm on that, I might make, we're having a meeting of the Criminal Justice Advisory Commission immediately following, or 10:30, and any of the commissioners that want to sit in on that are invited to be here because I think you might find it, we're going to get the report on the jail population expectancy or expectation, so I'd invite you to attend that. Right here?
Yeah, it'll be right here. Good reminder. Any other? Old business. You want to have any old business? I will tell you that we have this draft of the fleet policies and procedures that we talked about a few weeks ago, that we had some questions about whether that was adopted or not, and then there's a whole issue of space needs. Those are old, old business items, but I think they needed to be brought back to the counter, so to speak, so in the next few weeks, those are a priority for us, because I think it's extremely important that we adopt a vehicle fleet policy and procedures resolution. Commissioner?
I'd suggest, Mr. Chair, that you set a date, that we're going to discuss this, we keep talking about it, but we don't set a firm date, and maybe that would trigger us to, especially the fleet one I'm talking about.
It's a good point, I thought, to be honest, and my memory was bad again, obviously. I thought we'd already done that, we'd gone through a rough draft. There's some new changes that were brought this week that Ken provided to me to read, and he came up with some new suggestions or adjustments, if you will, to the policies that I think need to be considered, so.
What Commissioner Bennigan and I had discussed was the, on the 24th, we would do a briefing on where we were at on some of the proposed changes that we're looking at. It's things that, you know, we would need to also, we need to get your sense of what you'd like to see, and so that we can discuss with the department, hasn't any impacted departments. But we would do a briefing on where we're at right now with some of the proposed ideas for the fleet policy, and then depending on that feedback on the 24th, then we would look at meeting with departments and finalizing things, and then bringing you back a final product for your review. But we've got a draft already that Commissioner Bennigan has looked at, and again, we've come up with some other considerations that we're wondering should be included or not. I mean, this is complicated by the fact that typically these fleet policies are done because you have a fleet management department, and we don't have that here, and so that's where some of the conundrum is, is we try to blend these and make it consistent within the departments.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Kelly?
I don't know if this is the time to make a suggestion or in 24th, but I would hope we would consider, there's a lot of vehicles running around with CO plates that are not Minnehaha County. Am I correct there, some of the nonprofits? But I hope we will identify everything other than undercover vehicles as Minnehaha County vehicles, either on the back or the side or something, so that it's clear whether or not it's a Minnehaha County vehicle.
We, quite frankly, that's not part of the discussion that we've been doing, and that, you know, and that would be something I suspect that we would discuss on the 24th, but I will just tell you, that's not something that we've been looking at as far as this vehicle policy. We've been looking more at setting maintenance standards and replacement standards and usage standards rather than, you know, identity. Now, some of the identity things that was mentioned in our graphic standards manual, there is a little brief explanation about vehicles and what perhaps some of the expectations there are for vehicles, so maybe your concerns would be on that. You know, the issue of the CO on the license plate, you're right. I mean, there are some nonprofits like CCOD run with CO plates, and I would assume that that's a state-controlled issue and that, on how they issue those plates, but you're right. I was aware that there was a nonprofit that was doing that, when I got a phone call that we had a county vehicle speeding down the interstate, and when I got the description, I'm going, "It's not our vehicle," and when I tracked it down, yep, it belonged to CCOD, so.[1750.42][1750.42](laughter)
Well, I just, you know, when we're doing this, I think this would be the time to incorporate, you know, if we're going to do a comprehensive, otherwise you start adding on down the road, and it sometimes gets done, sometimes not. But that's just a suggestion, I think we should.
Any other comments about the policy conversation? Otherwise, we'll move forward with that. Any other old business? If not, we need to go to exec session for personnel and contract issues.
And litigation.
And litigation. Make a motion for personnel contracts and litigation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor going into executive session for personnel contracts and litigation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.